And this is the Stoughton City Council meeting, and we'll start out with the roll call.
Okay, Hirsch.
Here.
Jensen.
Here.
Lagaki. Mieski.
Yep.
Thank you. Reeves.
Here.
Hunt.
Here.
Schumacher.
Here.
Nikolski.
Here.
Caravelo.
Here.
Raff.
Here.
Eily.
Here.
So we have ten Alders present. Vinagis is absent and excused, and I'm not sure has Lagaki signed in yet?
No. I don't see her.
Haven't seen her yet. We'll keep an eye out.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Minutes and reports are in the packet, and we do have somebody signed up for public comment, but I don't see that person logged in right now. So I guess we'll keep moving, and you can either come back, or I can send out an email. I have a copy of the of the the public comment. Communications and presentations. Any communications from Alders? All right, here none. Next item would be consent agenda, which consists of mostly minutes, and there is a special event license in there and a couple of other things. I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion, but then I also have a comment.
Okay. Second. A motion by Hirsch, a second by Jensen, Alder Person, or President Hirsch?
With respect to the committee appointments, for a while there, we were actually, it would be nice to know what committee the people are being appointed to. It used to be listed, but it's not anymore, and you used to include their kind of their questionnaire or whatever that required them to get on these committees. And it would be nice to see that again, so we know what community members are on and what their expertise are, so, you know, people can, you know, it's one way for us council members to know who they are, and also to know where they're going and what committees would be great.
Okay. The two that are on there for tonight, I don't remember their names off the top of my head, but they would be on the commission it's the Commission on Aging or Seniors in Need. Is that the senior center, both of them?
Okay.
So those are the positions, and are the names in there Candy?
Yes.
They are.
Okay.
I think it said seniors in need on the.
Yeah, I think that's what it is. But certainly, I can, going forward, I can see if I can get them to fill out the application.
Yeah, it's just good and nice to know who people are.
Sure. Okay. Any other questions, or anybody want anything voted on separately?
Well, I just had a question about the Resolution 194, the cider tasting event.
Yes.
Do we know if there are a limited number of tickets, or if there's a number of people that can be allowed in, or any of those parameters?
I would probably defer the question about the number of tickets to Candy. I mean, there is a building capacity that they would have to follow. I believe that, is it the fire department that enforces that?
Mm-hmm.
They have to follow those rules. Candy, do you know anything about the number of tickets that are anticipated or anything?
That part I do not know. That's not anything that I have any authority over. Again, I would say that it would be limited by capacity.
Yes.
Except by the fire department.
And then I also had a question for maybe somebody on the public safety. I, and I may be wrong about this, but I remember hearing some concerns about the last time there was a large event and some over-serving, but I don't know if that was addressed at all in public safety.
We did, oh, sorry. Go ahead.
But, yeah, so I'm just wondering if you had any conversations about, you know, like making sure people aren't over-served or anything, and I don't know if my memory serves me correctly, but I feel like I heard some concerns after another similar event with some people spilling out under the.
A while back, right?
I'm sorry, say again.
I think, wasn't that at the Coors House a number of years ago?
That was at the Coors House, yes. We will always discuss best practices, and those are, best practices are included within the packets that they're given. So, you know, most of it is covered now. In this particular case, it wasn't discussed because it wasn't an issue.
Okay. That was it. Thank you.
I think that one where you mentioned the Coors House one, wasn't that the one where they also had some inadequate bathroom facility and all that sort of thing? Okay.
Yeah, it was a few years ago.
Yeah.
I figured it must have been prior to COVID. That's why I wasn't sure my memory served me, so thanks for that refresher.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, that was it.
All right. Any other questions, comments on the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, did we skip the committee minutes or not? Number two?
No.
Those are just typically included in the packet.
Okay, all right. Thanks.
Sure. Any other questions?
Hirsch probably had some questions on that. I think she probably had some questions.
No, no, they're fine. I just was curious if that usually goes in the consent agenda or where it belongs. That's okay. Thank you.
No problem. All right. All in favor of the consent agenda, say aye.
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 And any opposed? None opposed. That motion carries. Next item is Ordinance 18. It looks like we have three ordinances in a row from the Plan Commission. They're all second readings. Alder Person Caravelo, that would be you.
That apparently would be, and.
I'll pull it up here for you.
You could do that. That would, you can probably do it quicker than I can. Okay, there it is. So, yes, this is the second reading of this, and this is Ordinance 18 of 2022, amending Chapter 30, blood plane zoning of the municipal code of the city of Stoughton, and I so move.
Second by Alder Person Schumacher. Alder Person Caravelo.
And I'm just gonna, if anybody's got any questions, I'm just gonna throw this to Randy, but we did go over this at last council meeting.
You might recall, Alder Hunt raised a question about an area that had been stricken. We revisited that section that the DNR had suggested for deletion. It's been reincorporated, so thank you for highlighting that issue.
All right. Were there any questions or comments on the ordinance? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
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 And any opposed? None opposed. That motion carries. Next one is Ordinance 24, and I'll pull that one up for Alder Person Caravelo as well. If I can find it here. There it is. Alder Person Caravelo.
All right. Thank you, sir. This is Ordinance 24 of 2022, an ordinance amending the zoning classification at 2232 Addison Drive in the city of Stoughton, Wisconsin, and I so move.
Second.
Second by President Hirsch. Alder Person Caravelo.
And this is the, if folks will recall, this is the changing of the zoning classification, because this was originally supposed to be, I guess we're calling it a tot lot or pocket park or something like that. Since it is so close to Nordic Ridge Park, we deem that the park being not necessary.
All right. And here's a map on the screen. Any questions or comments on this one? And I'm checking the zoomers. I can't see all the zoomers here. Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 And any opposed? That motion carries. Next ordinance is number 25. Alder Person Caravelo.
Yes, thank you. This is Ordinance 25 of 2022. Again, the second reading, an ordinance amending the zoning classification at 1,008 Riverview Drive in the city of Stoughton, Wisconsin, and I so move.
Second by Alder Person Hunt. Alder Person Caravelo.
And this is to rezone this from SR4 to SR5, single-family residential, changing the the size of the setback.
All right. Any questions or comments on this one? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
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 And any opposed? None opposed. That motion carries. All right. You're dismissed, Alder Person Caravelo.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah. We have, don't leave. We have some new business. R196 of 2022, and this is a liquor license application, and I believe that this went through, they go through public safety.
Yep.
I might have missed that meeting. And I'll just pull it up here. Alder Person Jensen.
Thank you, Your Honor. Resolution 196, 2022, a resolution authorizing and directing the proper city officials to approve a Class B liquor and a Class B beer license for Mallory Wagner LLC, owner, agent, DBA, the revival for the premises located at 201 South Sixth Street, and I'd move for approval.
Sir, a second.
Second.
Second by Alder Reeves. Alder Person Jensen.
Yep. This was recommended approval by the Public Safety Committee on a 4-0 vote. There were no issues. This is just a new owner taking over an existing business, and everything was in order. No issues noted by the chief or the lieutenant, so recommending approval.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on this one?
Question, because it's a new owner, I mean, I thought we were at our limit with liquor license, but because that did that licenses transfer to the new owner from the Nevermind Bar, or?
We'll let Candy answer. It doesn't.
I was just curious, because last year we were trying to figure out who to give the license to, because it was a, one was on the phone, one walked into the office, and so we, you know, at the same situation with licenses this year, and how did this person get their license?
Well, that didn't happen this year, thankfully.
Yeah.
Right.
So I'll let Candy explain it, but they don't technically transfer the licenses, my understanding. Go ahead.
Correct, correct. The Nevermind, we have an appointment set up for Friday. They'll be coming into City Hall, and the Nevermind owner and or agent will be surrendering her license, and at that time, when I receive that letter, the license in my hand, I can issue the license then to Mallory Wagner. So there's not a transfer, but there's a surrender. They put a small condition on there that it's with the intention that the regular license be issued to the applicant that we have approved already.
Okay, so there wasn't anybody else waiting for a liquor license in the city this year?
Correct. Had it been made public, a public offering, yes, but this was the arrangement made in between the seller and the purchaser, and this is how we can handle it at the city level, the licensing aspect of it.
Could you pipe in on that? You know, does it, that's legal for them to do that in their agreement, purchase agreement?
So this is a typical structure for the sale of an existing business where there's a liquor license attached or an alcohol license. The seller will, and the buyer will have an agreement that includes a contingency of sorts that relates to the alcohol license, and they'll structure it, the agreement, so that the seller agrees to surrender the license on the condition that it be, you know, it, that the license would then be issued to the buyer. That doesn't mean the city is bound to issue the license to the buyer. The city has the same discretion to say yes or no to that, that it would always have. The, there is an additional potential complicating factor that we can face if that structure is at odds with a city policy about how to handle these licenses. My knowledge, we don't have a, we haven't adopted a policy that would be inconsistent with what's happening here. You know, we have had some conversations, I think, from time to time about, you know, how do we deal with the fact that we don't really have licenses available, or they can be heavily in demand, and in some cases you can have more than one person who would like the license. But to my knowledge, we don't have an actual policy in place that dictates how to handle that. So it's kind of first come, first served, as I understand it right now, and here what we have is an actual, so we have an application for a new license that is tied to the surrender of an existing license. So this is not an unusual way to handle this. And again, to my knowledge, Candy, let me know if I'm off base here, but we don't have, we have not, as a city, adopted a policy that would require us to handle this in some other way, to my knowledge.
You're correct.
But if at some point the council decides we need to look differently at how to do this, we can have that conversation, but frankly, when we've talked about it, at least at a staff level, I don't, I don't know that we have any perfect solutions to this problem.
It seems to me, I remember we did discuss this slightly, you know, there was a little bit of discussion about it, and that was just, the decision that we made was to just let it go as it is, because there were more complications than we really needed to address.
Yeah.
It was easier to just take it one.
First come, first served, one application at a time, rather than try and put together some kind of a waiting list system, or a lottery system, or something like that. I mean, we could talk about that, but so far, we haven't done that.
No.
But there wasn't any, Candy, you said that there wasn't anybody waiting for a license this year. So the sale didn't usurp somebody else that's been waiting?
Nobody was, was, made a mention of it to me at the time that this license, this transaction was taking place, the sale of the business, so I don't know of anyone. They've not left names or numbers with me.
Okay. I just didn't want.
We don't really have a system in place that would really allow that.
Well, we don't have a waiting list system per se. I mean, that's part of the issue, is we just don't have a system that really would allow someone to come in and say, I want to be on the list. So it's, the situation we had, that where we had two applicants at the same time was coincidental, I think.
Yeah.
It wasn't by design. It wasn't as if someone was on the waiting list.
I think that this case right here kind of proves out that it's best to just leave it as it is, simply because we would be dictating whether that sale goes through or not if we had a waiting list and there was somebody on that waiting list ahead of them.
I think if we were going to develop a policy, we would want to think very carefully about how to not create real challenges for business owners who are looking to sell existing businesses. We'd have to figure out a solution of some kind of that problem.
Okay. Any other questions or comments on this one? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
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 And any opposed? None opposed. That motion carries. Next item is R197 of 2022, and this one also, I believe, went through public safety. Alder Person Jensen.
Yep. Let me pull that back up.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is a I think we did, yeah, okay. Resolution coming out of public safety, approving the city of Stoughton Election Day contingency plan, and I would move for approval.
Second.
Second by Alder Person Schumacher. Alder Person Jensen.
Yeah, this is a, if you read through it, you can see that there's a contingency plan. I believe that Candy, you brought this forward. I don't really have any, I think, I'll let Candy, if you're there, maybe you could comment on it. I don't really have any pertinent information I could relate to the council.
Certainly, certainly. Happy to. Stoughton has not had, in the past, an emergency contingency plan for elections, even though it's highly recommended by the Wisconsin Elections Commission. So what I've put together is just a really basic plan that's intended to be a tool to prepare our election officials in Stoughton for Election Day events, whether it be a storm event, or, you know, any other things that have been, as we know, been taking a place, taking place around us. So it's to help implement parts of, to help implement parts of this plan. We have training set up with EMS next week. They're going to do a Stop the Bleed. We also have PD doing an ALIS training, which is an active shooter response. ALIS stands for Alert, Lockdown, Inform, Counter, and Evacuate. So we have probably about 50 election inspectors signed up for the ALIS training already, and the EMS training is limited at 20, so we're at capacity for that one as well. Along with the plans before you, I've also included floor plans that we've never had for our polling locations. We asked planning for some, they dug through some of the past files and found floor plans for some of the churches, and then IT kind of made a very simple map. We didn't know where exits were to some of these churches, and when I called and asked for that, they, they just told us to look for the exit signs. So I'm hoping that this gives us a little bit more to plan for all types of events. Where do we hide if there's a tornado outside? What do we do on Election Day? So it's a moving document, and I've been working closely with Chief Jinks to continue looking at all the details that go with this moving forward. So that's, in a nutshell, I don't know if anybody has any questions.
Alder Person Schumacher does.
Sure.
Candy, I'm really pleased to see that you've put together a contingency plan like this, and the detail that you have in it. So, I mean, well done on assembling all of that. On the other hand, I'm profoundly disturbed that we even have to have such a plan like this. It's almost shocking to read the first bits in it and see that these are, these are a sad reality.
I agree. During one of my trainings for the August election, I mentioned this to the poll worker or the election inspectors that were attending the training, letting them know that this was something I was working on, and they were very pleased to hear this. They have never had any any sort of training in regards to what's the safest exit? Where do we go? What do we do? And we have a long ways to go, but they're very happy that we've started this conversation.
Anybody else have any questions or thoughts? All right. Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
And any opposed? None opposed. That motion does carry. Next item is, pardon me? Oh, I thought I heard something. Our next item is coming from Stoughton Utilities, and Shannon Stats is here tonight to kind of give us an update of where Stoughton Utilities is since its budget season. And whenever you're ready, Shannon.
Sure. We, on the agenda, we have listed our draft budget. We aren't quite there yet to present our complete draft budget to you, but we thought we'd take this opportunity to give you an update as far as where we're at, when we anticipate coming back to you, and then what you can expect to see in our budget when we come back to you on the 25th. So next week, Monday, is our Utilities Committee presentation. We do anticipate having the budget to them pending their approval. We will bring it back to you on the 25th, and then, of course, council adoption on the November 15th with your general levy budget as well. Things I wanted to point out, just so you have an idea of what we are looking at, and what you can expect to see. A broken record, you all know this, costs are super high. We are, for 23, we are anticipating those costs are going to remain high, and then we're even going even further, 24, we're expecting it to go up even more, and then, you know, 25 through 27, we're adding additional escalators on those. I feel this is excessive, however, I don't know what's going to happen, and we'd rather have a plan in place, worst-case scenario, where we're going to go should all these costs continue. Another thing you're going to see is that we have a very aggressive capital replacement on the sewer and water side. For the next five years, we are following along with the street projects that are occurring, and it just makes sense for us to go with those projects as well. So water and sewer, we will see higher than we've seen in recent years for capital replacements to keep up with that schedule. Revenues, we, on the electric side, we are anticipating a slight increase for 23 and 24. We know there are some developments coming, but after that, we're going flat usage on the electric side. Generally, we don't like to, we don't increase, anticipate an increase on the usage, because as we know, everything is going down for water and electric usage. We are going to keep water and sewer flat, even though we are increasing, anticipating an increase in usage on the electric side, because those decline, you know, at a faster rate than the electric does. So we're going to keep those flat in hope that those move together. Due to our anticipated increase in our expenses and in the capital projects, we are anticipating some rate increases for all three utilities over the next five years. We had originally planned in 24 for an electric rate increase. I think we're going to move that up to 23 for two reasons. One, our purchase power costs are just going through the roof. Our PCAC has exceeded the limits that the PSC has set for us. We've had to notify them that we're exceeding that limit, and that's only because the power costs continue to go up. So I think that's a trigger that we should probably go in and have those rates readjusted to reflect those power costs. And secondly, wanting to bump that up to 23, because we are anticipating in 24, we're going to have a water, simplified rate case, as well as a sewer. So not wanting to hit our customers with all three of those in one year, I think it makes sense for us to move that electric rate case up to 23, but as of now, that is the only one that we are anticipating for, 23. You'll see, we have staggered out there for water and sewer due to those capital projects that we have, that we see coming. We do have water and sewer anticipated rate increases for every other year, alternating back and forth between the two of those. Lastly, you can also anticipate, we do have some debt issuances. The DOT has a project that's coming through Stoughton, ripping up the road, redoing the road. We, that is our opportunity to get in there and replace those water and sewers under the street. That is a very high price tag for us, not something that we can absorb in our yearly capital plan. We do anticipate borrowing for that project in 2025, and then in 27, we have some plant upgrades at the wastewater treatment plant that also are over and above what we are normally anticipating for our capital spending. Overall, I would say that all of this is very fluid. We are going to take it year by year, hoping that we've got a plan in place now, anticipating all these costs continuing to go up. We hope that this is worst-case scenario for us. I will continue to monitor this every year, but wanted to bring that forward to you, so you have an awareness of what things are looking like should the conditions stay the same as they are that we're seeing right now in '22. So barring any unforeseen circumstances, we'll be back with our draft budget to you here in a couple of weeks, and we look forward to sharing it with you then.
All right. Are there any questions tonight for Shannon? Alder Person Schumacher.
Shannon, one question on the revenue side. When you've got usage in that for electric, water, and sewer as remaining flat unchanged, is that aggregate of residential, commercial, industrial altogether, or?
Yeah, that's correct. We did do something a little different on the sewer side, because we had. because we had some information there that we thought might be a little bit different than the other classes. But overall, for electric and water, it's aggregate for everyone, correct?
Okay, I was just curious if there was somewhat of an uptick with having some of the other bigger industrial, commercial customers coming online, or if that is just a minor percentage?
I'll have to, I'll, that's a good point. I can revisit that with Jill to make sure we're looking at that correctly on the electric side. I can certainly put that in my do list for tomorrow and just make sure we're capturing everything that we really anticipate to come through.
Got it. I mean, I was thinking about like zinc, zinc power and then when, well, Emmy won't come in until next year, but that might be something to think about too because they should have a pretty good electric draw with as much cooling capacity as they need.
Yep, that's a good point. I will make sure of that, revisit that with Jill. We'll have that discussion tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
And this is Jill. I am on it. That would be helpful to discuss that briefly. I think that's an excellent point, Brett. And one thing that we're running into is that, you know, with conservation, we do have a little bit of an uptick on the electric, but it's not. We try to budget, you know, usually flat, so Shannon's point. I mean, Ross, that's going to be a huge load, but a lot of that will be in a, because of the primary meter and kind of how they're set up and because of the way their load is and all that. And then once they get up to, say, temperature for the cooling, they can stay there pretty efficiently. So we see that they'll have a lot of power needs, but from a revenue standpoint, it won't be as dramatic as would be ideal for that kind of a load. But it's a very stable load, which is good for the utility, but it's not a huge revenue stream.
Got it.
All right, anybody else have any questions? All right, thank you very much. And then the next item is going to be Resolution 198 of 2022. And this one is from the library. And is that Alder Person Lagaki? Is she on the library?
Yes, she is.
Yeah, she's okay.
Yes.
Yes, you're there. Do you want to introduce this one? Jim is in the room, so if you want to introduce it, we'll get a motion in a second, and Jim can come up and speak to it.
This is Resolution 198 of 2022. This is the annual request for exemption from the Dane County Library Tax, given that our minimum standards of contribution exceeds what is required. And so we would like to be exempt from that library tax. So moved.
Is there a second? Second by President Hirsch. Any initial questions?
Jim has good information here, and I think he wants to share that.
Matt up?
Hello. Yeah, I, so the resolution that you have in front of you is, as Jean said, identical pretty much to ones that you've passed in past years. And it commits the city to funding the library at or above what's called the minimum appropriation. And state law says that municipalities that do this can request exemption from the county library tax. Every county has, is empowered by state law to levy a tax on municipalities for library services. So I usually, the previous director before me, and then before the pandemic, I took the opportunity to talk a little bit about how the county funds the library and how the library is funded in general. So if you would permit me, I have a few slides, and I will be brief. I can even set a timer. So, so do you have the, are you able to bring up the slides?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So, as I said, this resolution that you have in front of you states that the city will fund the library at a level that will enable it to, the city, to request exemption from the county library tax. So how is the library funded? If you want to go to the next slide. So who pays for library services? This pie chart shows the 2021 budget year. 2022 was an odd year for a couple different reasons, mostly because there was a one-time infusion of some fund balance money. So this is 2021. The biggest, you can see the contributions of Stoughton taxpayers, of course, in the form of the transfer from the city's general fund to the library board makes up the lion's share of the budget, about 70%. A smaller share comes from Dane County in the form of what we call county reimbursement fees. Essentially, this is the county paying libraries for services provided to those living in the county, either those living in a municipality without a library or those living in a municipality with a library and choosing to use our library. So it's this funding that I want to discuss in a little bit more detail quickly. I'll just mention that the much smaller slice of the pie there, which you can barely see in red there, that is cross-county payments, or what we call adjacent, payments from adjacent counties. This, these are payments made, as the name suggests, from adjacent counties to our library for services provided to residents of those counties. And for us, it mostly means Rock County. They pay the majority of it, but that's a much slicer, smaller slice of the pie. So those three amounts taken together make up the vast majority of our budget. And those three items together, I'll come back to those at the end, determine what's called the library per capita tax or the, for library tax burden. Okay, you can go on to the next one. So county reimbursements are calculated based on use of the library, which in our world means circulation, things checked out. This is not the best metric, but it's the easiest one to collect, and I'll talk about that in a minute. Our library database knows where our patrons live and where they pay taxes. So here you see the top 10 census tracts in which patrons lived, patrons who checked out books and other items at our library in 2019, which is the last normal year that we have data for. And as expected, you can see the vast majority of our patrons come from the city of Stoughton. But then also, there's a substantial amount from the town of Dunkirk, the town of Pleasant Springs, and the town of Dunn. And the reimbursement fees that we receive from Dane County every year is payment for the services provided to those individuals. Those municipalities, towns, that don't have a public library, pay a county library tax to the county. The mayor and I were just talking about this earlier, and I don't have that piece of information for you yet, but I have reached out to Tracy Harold about what the various municipalities pay for library tax, and I can definitely follow up with you on that. Reimbursements are paid annually to the libraries by Dane County, based again on usage, averaged out over the last three years. The formula is very complicated. It takes into account services and facilities, so based on our building's square footage. At the heart of the formula is something called cost per circ. You can go on to the next slide. So cost per circ is nothing else but the total expenditures divided by total circulation. And this is used to determine the payments made. State law actually only requires counties to reimburse libraries at 70% of cost per circ. Dane County and other libraries in the state are committed to fully funding public libraries, so they reimburse at 100%, luckily. I should mention the reimbursements that I talked about, we get from adjacent counties. Those come at 70% of cost, because that's the law. So you probably already figured out that the more people that use our library, the better in terms of the reimbursements that we see from the county. Conversely, if there are disincentives for people to use our library, so if it's less attractive, poor location, lack of parking, outdated facilities, or shabby outdated collections, surly librarians, then the people may use other libraries instead of ours. That's not the case at our library, I'm glad to say. But, so this funding model that's based strictly on circulation places libraries in a sort of competition with one another, unfortunately, for users and for the county funding that follows them. So that's one limitation of this model. And the other limitation of this funding model came to light during the pandemic. You can probably guess that during 2020 and 2021, when a lot of our buildings were closed or partially closed, and we were relying on curbside pickup, circulation numbers went way down. Even averaged out over three years, if those numbers, those circulation numbers from 2020 and 2021 were included in the formula, it would tank the reimbursements for libraries across the county. So what the county library board has decided is that they are going to essentially freeze the reimbursements at what they were in 2019. So we are getting the same reimbursement this year, or I'm sorry, we'll be getting the same reimbursement for 2023 that we got last year, actually a little bit more, nominal amount more. But so at the moment, Dane County Library has contracted with a consultant to study this issue and look at possible alternative reimbursement models. It's, I don't envy them that task because whatever model you come up with, you're going to create winners and losers across the county. But we, the goal is to come up with a model that more accurately reflects the value that libraries provide to their communities. Okay, not so bad. So that's how counties fund the libraries. You can go to the next slide. So back to the minimum appropriation, which is the subject of the resolution you have in front of you. The minimum appropriation is not the only requirement for exemption from the county library tax. There are also six standards that libraries must meet in order to be exempt from the county library tax. I'm happy to say that we do meet all of these. And these are minimums. There are minimums for each of these standards, and these are based on population. That's it, municipal population, period. The minimum appropriations, which we'll see in just a second, are based on the equalized value of property. So you can go on to the next slide. Yeah, that's basically what I just said, that the, the minimum appropriation is based on the equalized value of property. Go to the next one. You can see here, I probably can't read it on the screen, but hopefully in your packet, you can read it. You can see here the minimum appropriations for the villages and cities in Dane County. The column labeled 2022 AR App shows the actual amount appropriated in 2022 by each municipality according to the library's annual report. That's what AR means, annual report. Just a quick look tells you that all or most municipalities fund their libraries well above the minimum because the minimum appropriation is just that. It is a rock-bottom figure. It is not enough to sustain a library. Matt?
Good question. Is there still a maintenance of effort requirement?
No, maintenance effort, it went away. Under, yeah, in 2011. So this is sort of what, this is sort of in place of maintenance of effort. This kind of takes a place of that. Yeah, that's a good question. So the minimum appropriation, by the way, is the amount that the municipality would have to pay if they decided that they were not going to support a library or if the standards weren't being met. So.
The county tax levy.
The county tax levy, yes, yes. So the county, the minimum appropriation, that amount, my understanding is that that is the amount that a municipality would have to pay in county tax levy if they decided or if they didn't have a library. Does that make sense?
Yeah, one question I have about that, and this gets way deeper than the reason we need to, but is it actually the county tax levy that's collected by the county? Is it, is the taxpayer obligation in a municipality reflected in the county levy or the municipality's levy?
The municipality's levy, I believe.
So what, the municipality levies the tax and sends it to the county, and then the county distributes it?
That's my understanding.
Dave has an answer.
I used to work for several counties. The county tax is collected on the county's tax levy. It is exempt from the levy limit law, though.
It's included in the county tax levy number on your tax bill?
Correct.
Not in the municipality's tax levy?
Correct.
So that's the opposite of what I said. Thank you, Dave. I could, Tracy Harold, the Director of Dane County Library Service, could speak on that much better than I could. That's a little bit above my pay grade. But the next slide is a table showing the minimum appropriation versus the actual appropriation for 2021. And like I said, the, you know, most municipalities are funding their libraries, including Stoughton, thankfully, is funding their, funds their libraries at a level that is necessary for library services. The only municipalities where they're really squeaking by are ones where they've had explosive growth and equalized value, and the city, the municipalities are having to keep up. So you can see that, you know, in the usual suspect. So you can go to the next slide. So I want to leave you with this. This shows the support per capita of the Dane County libraries. In other words, this is the tax burden per capita on taxpayers being served by these libraries. And it's, is, it's, this is calculated by taking, this is based on 2019 data, and this is calculated by taking the three sources of our budget, the county appropriate, the county reimbursement, municipal appropriation, and the cross-county payments, and dividing that by the number of patrons or number of people in our service population. So, you know, this, you'll, we, this is not to suggest the city isn't adequately funding the library, far from it. We're grateful for the support we've received, and that includes in this coming budget in 2023. What it does show, though, is that Stoughton residents and residents of surrounding communities served by our library are really getting an incredible value for their tax dollar in terms of the library services. And it shows, you know, frankly, that there's room to grow. So as our community grows, my hope is that the library will grow right along with it. And that's all I have. And it's only 12 minutes. I'd be happy to entertain any questions. The towns do, the towns pay the library. What's happening?
They're not on the.
Oh, that's because, so the, on that list there, the list that Rodney's talking about on Slide 5 that shows the minimum appropriations, those are only communities that have libraries. So the, yeah, the towns pay the county library tax. So the, those, the only ones that are on there are communities that support. Any other questions?
Being none from the room, anything from Zoomers? All right, no questions. So we have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 And any opposed? None opposed, that motion carries. Thank you for being here, Jim. And the next item is R 199 of 2022. And this one here is coming from Park and Rec Committee, and that's, I believe, Alder Tokowski.
Thank you, Mayor. This is file, this is file number R 199 2022 of October 11, 2022. This is a resolution by the Common Council of the City of Stoughton approving the Director of Parks and Recreation to enter into a project agreement with Stoughton Area Baseball Association for the Norris Park Baseball Diamond Dugout Project. And I move to approve the resolution.
Is there a second? A second. Second by Alder Person Jensen. Alder Person Tokowski.
Yeah, we had a special meeting in parks, and there were excellent questions asked and answered by Dan Glenn and Freddie Bear. And I think Dan is here. He can, if he is, he can give a good overview of this one.
Sure, I'll give a brief overview of the project. So obviously, the horse park houses full-size baseball diamond. It's used by the High School, SDA, which is Stone Area Baseball Association, which is the upper age groups of youth baseball in towns like American Legion, and then also the Stoughton Home Talent Team. the Stoughton Home Talent Team. The dugouts at the, at the baseball diamond are in bad shape and actually have holes in the sides of them. So the city was approached by Stoughton Area Baseball Association as far as replacing the dugouts, and they had a donor willing to donate the money. So I contacted Attorney Dragney, and he drafted the, the project agreement between the city and Saba. And that's what's, this resolution is about, moving forward, and it really stipulates, you know, its site's responsibilities. And I'll turn it over to Brett, if he's on here, and he can talk more about the actual dugout design, and then he has a presentation I included on here as well.
Yeah, thanks, Dan. Yeah, so we, like Dan said, we were approached by, by Saba, who had a donor willing to donate roughly $35,000, put new dugouts in. So we took a field trip to Oregon, who had recently built some new dugouts, and also looking at the ADA component to the dugouts for zero entry. So on your screen is, is the dugouts that Dan was talking about with actual holes in them. So they definitely need to be replaced, and so we are, are looking to replace them with a mortar, brick and mortar structure with a zero-entry slab on grade. And so we'd be looking to, to do that relatively quickly to take advantage of the weather that we have the next month or so. So with your approval of the agreement between the city and Saba, we'd move forward eventually tomorrow.
You guys don't waste any time, do you?
Well, we have a, a deadline if we want to get the, the masons that are being contracted through Saba, to get them on the site by the 24th of October. So a lot hinges on, on this agreement being approved tonight.
Yeah, I think, as you mentioned, there was a pretty tight turnaround, including drafting the developer's agreement, which Matt did, and we're thankful for that. One of the things we're trying to do is, on these projects, we're trying to create paper trails, so when we're gone someday, the next group can come in here and kind of have a little bit of a history. And by having an agreement and a resolution that really, you know, provides that for us, so there isn't any misunderstandings, especially if at some point we were to repurpose our parks, or, or, you know, a different group came in and ran the program, they would at least understand what the protocol and, and the expectations are for both, all parties involved here. So I think that's.
Sorry, man, that, that's a good point, because that also, that agreement spells out ownership of the dugout, even though the donors or Saba is donating the money to build these, these do become property of the city going forward. I think in the past, there were some structures that were built, and that wasn't spelled out in any sort of agreement. So this provides that, that paper trail, as you were talking about, going forward.
And I think the other thing it does is it ensures that some of the things that you outlined, as far as the materials and the ADA accessibility gets done, I think, you know, years ago, I don't know if there was that much consideration for those types of things. And I know we have a huge initiative in our, not only our core plan, but we have an ADA plan as well, and we're trying to incorporate that in all the projects that we do, and as well as the projects where there's funds donated to the city by, by different groups to make sure that we're kind of all on the same page here. Are there any questions or comments from Alders? Alder Person Hunt?
I would just say that, thank you very much, whomever the donor is. And I noticed that the only cost the, the city would have would be some in-kind work in helping ready the site, so to me, it sounds like a very good idea.
Yeah, it's a nice project, and one of the things I learned there is, there is a lot of use in that park. Even though I live there, I don't really pay attention on always who's coming and going, but my understanding is that home talent merchants play there. And, correct me if I miss any, there's Legion, and then there's some high school, I don't know what grades.
And JV, I believe. Did I correct you?
And I forget how many games are played there every year, but it was way more than I would have ever guessed, even though I live across, across the road from it, and once in a while, I see a ball go over the fence.
I think it's roughly 80 games per year.
Eighty?
Yeah.
You're really oblivious.
You know, I'm busy doing my chores.
Or you're here.
Yeah, I'm here. I did manage to go to a couple of games this year, and I have to say that the people there really enjoy the park and, and really the opportunity to have nice crowds there. So I, I know that the merchants especially are appreciative of the support the council's given them over the years. Any other?
I'm sure to walk my dogs through there, so they can bark at everyone. It is pretty often used, so.
All right. Any, anything from your end, Matt, as far as?
Nope.
No?
Well, well covered.
All right. Okay, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 And any opposed? None opposed, that motion carries. All right, I think we have two possible items that we might consider for closed session. Let me just get to my agenda here, make sure I didn't miss anything. So, yeah, we have two items. We have the True Hotel Property Evaluation Litigation, and we have the Sun Lane Litigation. How would you like to handle these, Matt?
Let's, I would suggest that we, the council authorized moving into closed session. Ryan is here, I see, to address the Hilton True. I think we should do that first, and then Isaac is prepared to appear by Zoom when I send him a text and tell him we're ready for him. So I think we should do Ryan first, since he's here.
All right. So does somebody want to make a motion and read the language here?
Sure.
Awesome.
I make a motion to go into closed session. The Common Council may convene in closed session for State Statute 19.85, parent 1, parent G this time, conferring with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body concerning litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved. And I so move.
Second. Second by Alder Person Jensen. Candy, when you're ready, we'll do a roll call vote.
Yes. Tokowski.
Aye.
Caravella.
Aye.
Eily.
Aye.
Hirsch.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Legaki.
Aye.
Mieske.
Aye.
Reeves.
Aye.
Hunt.
Aye.
Schumacher.
Aye.
Thank you. That's 11 Alders in favor.
All right, well, give us a moment here, and we'll get into closed session.